I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment's time. Okay, I do apologize for the slightly late start tonight. Madam Clerk, please.
Anderson.
President.
Bullock.
Here.
Litten.
Here.
Marx.
Yes.
Nowlin.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held December 21st, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can you please note that my vote is an abstention?
I will. I apologize.
As is mine.
Thank you. So, two abstentions and the rest in favor, that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 4th, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item one, Committee of the Whole report regarding January 19th, 2016 committee meeting.
Thank you. This will be a fairly brief report, although the meeting had much substance. We heard first from representative of Roundstone Management as well as our Planning and Development Department with respect to proposed resolution 8846-16, which provides for a four-year development loan in the amount of $50,000. We also, at this Committee of the Whole, address the Lakewood Facilities Assessment final report. This report was prepared by consultants hired by the city to give the city an overview of the various facilities, properties, and their various conditions, so that going forward, council and the administration can make the best and wisest possible choices about how we prioritize our space. Moving on from there, council had a very brief discussion about its schedule for making appointments, including the appointments laid out in Resolution 8840 and 8841, as well as a couple other comments about general council planning and housekeeping issues as we start off the new term, concluding with an agenda review for tonight's meeting. I would move that that report be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item two, Resolution 8840-16, a resolution appointing blank to a position on the Civil Service Commission for the term beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31st, 2018.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item three, Resolution 8841-16, a resolution appointing blank to the Board of Nuisance Abatement Appeals for the three-year term, beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31st, 2018.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item four, Resolution 8846-16, a resolution to enter into an agreement with Roundstone Management or its designated for an economic development loan for a four-year loan in an amount of $50,000. Refer to the Committee of the Whole, 1416.
Move to substitute. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the substitution? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a roll call of both.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
Litten.
Yes.
Marx.
Yes.
Nowlin.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. So, now we have the substitute. Move to adopt the substitute.
Second.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
Litten.
Yes.
Marx.
Yes.
Nowlin.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Alright, and that motion passes. So, Resolution 8846-16 is adopted. Substitute Resolution 8846-16, that is.
Item five, Communication from Council President O'Leary Regarding Council Committee Assignments.
Thank you. At this time, I would direct your attention to my communication regarding council committee assignments. I'd also underscore my really sincere enthusiasm and excitement to work with these different groups and different individuals over the course of the next couple of years, as we tackle the various challenges our city faces. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item six, Communication from Councilmember Anderson Regarding Changing Council Meeting From First and Third To Second and Fourth Mondays Of Each Month.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you very much. Dear colleagues, during my five years of service on Lakewood City Council, I have initiated informal conversations with council leadership over the possibility of altering this body's scheduled sessions from the first and third to the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Today, I offer this topic for formal council consideration. I've heard from individuals over the years that residents should not have to choose between attending council or Board of Education sessions, as these both occur at the same evenings and time. For some, this is a legitimate barrier to being as engaged in local government to the degree they wish to be. However, I appreciate the possibility that amending this schedule regarding council sessions, while sounding easy, may in fact be complicated and would likely usher in a set of unintended negative consequences. In name of resident access to local government bodies and sessions, I ask that city council engage the administration to study the notion of challenge of changing council scheduled session meetings, as well as the various processes and mechanics that would require adjustment as a result. I would anticipate this communication to be addressed by the Committee of the Whole, along with the administration, at a future meeting determined to provide ample time for thoughts to be gathered and shared. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this request for a discussion, and I motion that this communication be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion on Councilmember Anderson's communication? Councilmember Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I know that we had trouble in recent meetings here. Thanks, Mr. Anderson. I just don't recall. It's the current calendar for council meetings set by charter, by ordinance, or merely by tradition.
Mr. Chair, my reading of the charter for the city of Lakewood makes me believe it is up to our discretion on an annual basis, but I could be proven wrong on that. And I'm open to all considerations as to how this comes to be. But I'm under the impression that it's every year, council has an opportunity to set that, but it's been by tradition over the last number of years. But that is up to our opinion as to whether or not we want to alter that. That's my current interpretation.
And the logic behind your proposal, if I can infer, is that this way, if we were to make this schedule change, we would no longer conflict with the Board of Education's two-monthly meetings, and thereby allow ourselves and the public a greater opportunity to attend both of their local government bodies, correct?
Rescised.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you both. Law Director Butler, apt to put you on the spot, but would you care to weigh in on, is that your understanding also as to the tradition of council?
I think it's kind of fine in the ordinances.
Okay.
It can amend it by council.
Sure. Thank you. So, just to clarify there, it may be a matter that would require an action by ordinance. It may be a tradition, but in any case, it could certainly be something that council could take up and discuss. So, I believe that we have a motion to... I'm sorry, what was the motion?
The motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file, and that was seconded, and we were in the discussion. So, all those in favor, the motion to receive and file?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item seven, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, the Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board seeks council's permission to meet this year to finalize educational material regarding responsible pet ownership for distribution at appropriate venues in Lakewood. The board also hopes to work on a partnership this year with PetPix, who is willing to work with Lakewood pet owners to bring low-cost, innovative services to our residents. The board also seeks council's appointments before a meeting schedule can be posted and forum reached for meetings. Move to receive and file.
Second. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eight, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Backyard and Pilot Program. Dear colleagues, twelve months have passed since the Backyard Headkeeping Pilot Program began its eighteen-month tenure. Now is the time for council and the administration to begin a conversation on the merit and/or pitfalls of backyard headkeeping in Lakewood. Members of council, members of the administration that are impacted by the work involved with overseeing permits and regulations, and families participating in the pilot program should be included in our conversation, so we can make responsible decisions regarding the future of this program in Lakewood. Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item nine, Communication from Councilmember O'Malley Regarding Amending Code For Equal Access To Employment, Housing, Public Accommodations, And Education.
Councilmember O'Malley.
Dear members of council, Chapter 12117 of our code automatically terminates committee referrals older than six months at the end of each term of council. The attached ordinance just missed the deadline, having had two readings by the June 15th, 2015 council meeting. Therefore, I'm reintroducing legislation for your review aimed at protecting the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination, including discrimination based on age, race, color, creed, religion, national origin, ancestry, disability, marital status, veterans status, gender, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation or physical characteristic. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I just wish to say thank you to you and council and Marx for your earnest and diligent work during the last council to advance this, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do so this year. And move to refer to Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. And I would just echo that. I appreciate one of my regrets from the last term, that we didn't get to address this comprehensively, but I certainly appreciate your reintroduction of it.
I'll second.
Second the motion. Councilmember Bullock, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item ten, Ordinance 116, An Ordinance To amend Certain Provisions Of Codified Ordinances To Ensure That All Persons Within The City Have Equal Access To Employment, Housing, Public Accommodations, And Education.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Oh, and place on first reading, and refer to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eleven, Communication From Councilmember Bullock Regarding Appointment To The Community Relations Advisory Commission.
Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear Lakewood City Council Mayor, by this letter, I'm appointing Lydia Suarez-Kelly to serve on the Community Relations Advisory Commission. Lydia is a Lakewood resident, is active in volunteering, is conscientious and hardworking, and I know she will serve the commission well. I'd also like to thank my previous appointee, Chris Verona, for his service on this board sincerely. Who agrees to follow this communication?
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Marx.
I would just like to comment to Councilman Bullock that Lydia was present at the last meeting of the Community Relations Advisory Commission. She's very enthusiastic and is a tremendous asset to the commission. Thank you very much for sending her over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marx. Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twelve, Communication From Mayor Summers Regarding Recognizing Two Heritage Advisory Board Members.
Mayor Summers.
Thank you, Chairman O'Leary, members of council, members of the audience. I'm very pleased to recognize two outstanding and long-serving members of Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board, Marsha Mall, who has been a member for twenty years, and Heather Rudge, who has been a member for about eighteen years, thirty-eight years collectively. They're very dedicated preservationists, and brought an enormous amount of energy and commitment to advancing our respectful heritage here in Lakewood, which takes place in many forms, primarily structures, which is what they're concerned with. Their terms have expired, and we are very grateful for their service. Neither could be here tonight, so we'll make an opportunity, perhaps a somewhat time, to present the proclamation. Certainly, I'd like to join me in thanking them.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other council members? Discussion a minute? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item thirteen, Resolution 8847-16, A Resolution To Recognize And Thank Marsha Mall And Heather Rudge For Their Collective Thirty-Eight Years Of Public Service As Members Of The Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item fourteen, Communication From Planning And Development Director Siley Regarding Modifications Lakewood Sign Ordinances.
Director Siley. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, I direct your attention to my correspondence. If you recall, early in 2015, we began in earnest reviewing our sign code, mostly to update it to come into conformance with the community vision and our commercial design guidelines. We had an initial discussion with council about that work. We're working with Planning Commission and the Architecture Board Review. While that was going on, the United States Supreme Court issued a decision in Reed v. Gilbert that had direct bearing on our sign code, and so we've been working to further modify the code to come into compliance with that decision. As Director Butler mentioned during Committee of the Whole, though the sign code lives in the building code, there are impacts or effects to the zoning code related to residential signage. So, we ask that this not only be referred to Committee of the Whole, but also to the Planning Commission for a review or recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would move that the communication from Director Siley be received and filed.
Second.
On the motion, if there is discussion? Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is an interesting subject and one that's quite important. So, when there's time in the Committee of the Whole adopted it, we can spend a good thoughtful meeting or two or three on this. Among other impacts, it came to my attention last fall that our regulations regarding yard signs and size limits on political yard signs no longer apply because of the Supreme Court case referenced by Director Siley. So, among other impacts, and quite frankly, probably equally or more important impacts, would be the quality and look and degree of specificity that a lot of the commercial development signs feature. I'm of the view that we shouldn't have cigarettes and 25-cent wings on as many awnings and so forth in the city. This is our opportunity to have an impact. So, I do hope, I understand that the Committee of the Whole's backlog with very important issues, but I hope that we put in some time on this.
Thank you. On the motion to receive and file Director Siley's communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item fifteen, Ordinance 216, An Ordinance To amend Various Sections Within Chapter 1329 Signs Of The Codified Ordinances And Other Sign-Related Sections In Order To Update The Code.
Move to refer this item to Committee of the Whole and simultaneously to Planning Commission.
Second.
On that motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item sixteen, Communication From Planning And Development Director Siley Regarding Changes To Chapter 1306.60 Exterior Electric And Fuel-Burning Cooking Devices.
Director Siley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, council directs your attention to my correspondence. This is the exterior electric and fuel-burning cooking devices, more commonly known as grills. This is still an ordinance that's in development. Building and housing is working in conjunction with fire. What prompted, or one of the prompts for this was, we have approximately nineteen townhomes beginning construction, all of which will have a deck that's above the garage. And how do you, we know that there's going to be interest in having, using that space for outdoor cooking. How do you do that in a way that's safe and fair and reasonable and enforceable? So, we began looking at this modification for those kinds of decks, porch and patios above the first floor. Again, it's in development, and we look forward to discussing with council and community officials.
Thank you. On that communication, is there any discussion? I would move that we receive and file that communication?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item seventeen, Ordinance 316, An Ordinance Amending Section 1306.60 Of The Codified Ordinances By Expanding On The Regulations Governing Exterior Electric And Fuel-Burning Cooking Devices.
Move to refer to housing?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that referral? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes. I would also move that we place this on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eighteen, Communication From Human Resources Director Yusefie Regarding Deferred Compensation Plan Agreement.
Director Yusefie.
Thank you. Submitting the attached resolution, which will permit the city of Lakewood and Department of Human Resources to enter into agreement regarding the city's 457 plan. 457 plan is the deferred compensation plan for government employees. It's similar to a 401K in a private industry. It's named for the IRS tax code number where the regulation can be found. This will permit the city to renew existing agreements to ensure compliance with the tax code and consider any new agreements. This agreement will not cause any expenditure of city funds. Appreciate your assistance respectfully.
Thank you. I would move that that communication from Director Yusefie be received and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item nineteen, Resolution 8848-16, A Resolution To Enter Into One Or More Renewal Agreements With Representatives Of Government Employee Deferred Compensation Plans In Order To Continue To Provide A Wide Array Of Options For Employees Participating In Such Plans.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that referral? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes.
Item twenty, Communication From Finance Director Pay Regarding Amended Purchasing And Contracting Ordinances.
Director Ray.
Thank you. Attached is an ordinance, increasing the contracting authority ordinance to increase by $40,000 for the reasons listed in the correspondence. Please refer to the Finance Committee for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, Ordinance 3615A, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 3615 Adopted December 21st, 2016, to advertise for bids and to enter into contracts for the purchase of repair, maintenance, and operating supplies, services, and equipment as authorized by the 2016 appropriation ordinance.
Move to refer to finance?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-two, Communication From Law Director Butler Regarding Impounding And Disposition Of Animals.
Director Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The ordinance that follows this written communication, which I would commend your attention, merely puts into the code the requirements necessary for the Division of Police and the Animal Control Office to impound animals that have been abandoned by their owners and to dispose of those animals once, excuse me, a sufficient period of time has passed within which the owners have not collected them. So, I'd ask that it be referred to an appropriate committee for further consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-three, Ordinance 416, An Ordinance Amending The Code To Provide For The Impounding And Disposition Of Certain Animals And Establishing Related Charges.
Move to refer to public safety?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that referral? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-four, Liquor Permit Application For D5 New Type Two Lindy Restaurants 118 Viroge Edgewater Drive.
Let's see. This particular establishment is in Councilmember O'Malley's board. We will defer to Councilmember O'Malley?
I'm not familiar with this establishment and have no reason to object.
Thank you. In light of that, we would also like public safety to weigh in. There are representatives of the police department. Any comments on this?
Yeah, we did an investigation on the license application. We have no objection.
Thank you. Alright. Given that feedback, I would move that council resolve to make no objection.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item twenty-five, Liquor Permit Application For C1 And C2 Transfers To Lakewood Stop &amp; Shop 14235 From Eddie and Eddie One Stop.
Thank you. This particular establishment lies in Councilmember Litten's board. Councilmember Litten?
I'm also familiar with this establishment and see no reason to object.
Thank you. Public safety?
The police have no reason to object either.
Alright, thanks. Given that, I would also move that council resolve to make no objection to this permit application.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes. That brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. We have a docket sign-in sheet here. The first person signed up to speak is Carrie Stack. I know that this is someone I...
Hello, my name's Carrie Stack. I live at 17511 Fries. I was told that if I took a shot of my husband's Johnny Walker Blue, I wouldn't be nervous before I came up here. Let me tell you, that is a lie. It's a waste of good whiskey, a vest. I'm here, as I'm sure you guys all know already, regarding a little girl named Aleah. Aleah's dog is under surveillance right now by animal control due to the fact he may or may not be a pit bull. I'd like to say Aleah has cystic fibrosis. This dog is integral to her treatments. I have seen her undergo one of these treatments, during which she wears a vest that shakes her like a martini for fifteen minutes straight. She sits there seeing the Scrappy song, the name of her dog, who's under surveillance right now. He is a wonderful dog and an integral part of keeping her calm during these fifteen-minute treatments twice a day. She's a little girl. She's a child. A lot of these council members up here, a lot of the people in the audience, have children, grandchildren even. I say, please let Aleah keep her dog. He is important to her. We're not going to have Aleah as long as we should. Let's keep her happy, safe, the whole time she's with us. On a larger note, BSL, the whole reason why Aleah's life might be turned upside down. I see a lot of I-rolls. I know this has been brought up before. Don't worry, I don't have any statistics. I'm not going to force-feed you guys statistics you've heard over and over and over. This law's been here since 2008. You were a different council then. You have different information now. As you know, there's a big difference between laws and legislation. Laws are things we all know, things we all hold dear. You ask any child, is it right to kill? Is it right to hurt? They say, no, that's law. What we have with BSL is legislation. Legislation is something that needs to mutate, change, and evolve with our society. I bring to light love versus Virginia. We all know about Mildred and Richard Love, arrested because they broke the law, sentenced to a year in jail. Their crime? Interracial marriage. That was legislation. Mercifully, that has changed because of them. I ask you, please allow Aleah and her lovely little dog, Scrappy, to be the change in legislation for BSL. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kimberly Hartman.
I'm here to support Aleah and Scrappy. I am totally against BSL laws. A lot of you, you know, see pit bulls in a bad light, but if you look on social media, you'll see such a much more loving dog. There, you know, people sit there and say it's all in how they're bred and how they're raised. It's not in how they're raised, it's how their genetics are. People that are backyard breeders that breed these dogs that have no idea what they're doing, they're the ones that make the bad dogs out there attack. They're the ones that, you know, give the breed a bad name. I myself, I was lucky enough to move into Lakewood before the BSL passed. I have an American Bulldog, but I know all too well the stigma. I was gracious enough to have an ACO come to our home before we moved into Lakewood and advise me on how to protect my dog so I would never have to face something that Aleah's going to have to face. You know, don't take this little girl's dog away from her. My dog is twelve years old, my son is thirteen. She's old, we're going to have to put her down, and it breaks my son's heart, and, you know, that's just her being old. I can't imagine a four-year-old little girl losing her lifelong friend because that's what he's going to be. He's going to be her friend. He's not going to judge her, he's going to love her unconditionally. All we're asking is that you guys just take a look and just judge these dogs just on their personality, not by the stigma that's out there surrounding them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Young.
I'm Kevin Young. I live at fifteen ninety-eight Elver Avenue. You know, I don't know if you know what I do when I'm not kicking up the dust about the hospital, but I work in the business of rock and roll. I started in nineteen eighty-six. I've had the pleasure of working with people like David Bowie, Tina Turner, the Rolling Stones. It's a really rather long list, but you can imagine that when I was a rookie in nineteen eighty-six and I was working in excess, the band In Excess, for Atlantic Records, I was intimidated by what was going on. And there was a concert scheduled with In Excess at Blossom Music Center, and I was told two weeks before the concert was announced that the show was going to go to WMMS. And I had to deal with the other radio stations in the market, including W O N E, and I knew very well that when we made the announcement that WMMS had the big In Excess concert, that the people at W O N E would be very, very upset. And they were. But I was kind of hiding behind the idea that I was the rookie, you know? And I went down to my friend Ward Holmes, who was the program director down there, and I tried to say, Ward, you know, I'm new at this and, you know, I'm sorry, this is happening. Can we go to dinner? Can we talk about this? Maybe there's something else we could do. And he said, no. Said, you knew two weeks before this was going to happen, that it was going to happen. You didn't give me any warning. And you popped it on me, and I looked like a fool. I was there for you early on the record. I have been there for you on so many other records. I don't want to see you for a year. Get out of here, forget about me, I'm losing your number, and you can lose mine. And you know, the next day I was at WMMS and Kid Leo was congratulating me. That was a good deal, kid. Way to go, way to go. It's tough, we understand. And Murray Saul was there, the great Murray Saul. I don't know if you remember the Get Down Man. And he said, kid, you know, you look a little down and out. This is a big deal. And I said, well, I appreciate that, Murray, but, you know, W O N E chewed me out. And he laughed and he said, why? And he said, because he blamed me for this whole thing coming down, and I'm just a new guy. He said, you know what, kid? You might be the new guy, but the dealio is this, you're the joint. You carry the card that says Atlantic Records. You knew, and you're the joint, and you're paying the price. You know, it was hard to take, but I learned an important lesson. There's been a lot of talk about the status of this ER that we're going to have at the new building that's going to go up that's going to be owned by the Cleveland Clinic. You heard Dr. Kilroy speak last week. He explained to you in detail why that ER really can't be considered an ER since it's not attached, won't be attached, to an acute care hospital. There's real risk. There's people that are going to walk in to that ER, and they're, they're, they're going to be having heart attacks, and they're going to have, they're going to be in the middle of strokes. And that acute care hospital isn't going to be there. And time is tissue, just as the doctor said. As a body, a legislative body, you really should think about this. You should think about sending a letter out to each and every resident of Lakewood and explain to them that if they are having a heart attack, if they're appendix burst, if they're having a stroke, they need to skip this ER that they're talking about and go directly to an acute care hospital. Because there's people that will get in their cars and drive there expecting to be able to be taken care of. And there's, these are people who could very well end up not recovering the way they could have. Worse yet, you know, I hate to say it, but they could die as a result. Please, take the time, figure out how to do it, do a direct mail piece, and tell everybody what this place can do and what it can't do. Ladies and gentlemen, I hate to lay this on you, but it's just like Murray Saul said, you're the joint. It's up to you to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Peppert.
Council president, members of council, and citizens of Lakewood. After one of the last December council meetings, I came home and there happened to be an old movie on TV. It was The Bells of Saint Mary with Bing Crosby and Ingrid Bergman. Where at a big city Catholic school, Father O'Malley and Sister Benedict succeed in extending their school through the gift of a building in lieu of it being closed and demolished. I was really inspired, especially in light of our fight to save the hospital. Good actually overcame greed. And I don't know what has happened here, but I want to share some very important details of this impending loss, and I did a little bit of research on L H F. After I learned there was over thirty million dollars in charitable donations. And while I understand there's, you have no influence on how L H F conducts their business, you did have influence, or you did have influence over L H A, the Lakewood Hospital Association, which hired the Cleveland Clinic to manage the hospital. I know the city could not enforce the lease with the Cleveland Clinic. However, when Lakewood Hospital Association chose not to enforce that lease, the city did not hold them accountable to the L H A charter. Thus, the hospital was decanted, and given the light of that decanting plan, there should be no public statements of declining patient volumes or financial losses. Those losses were manufactured, so that would not be fair information to share with the public. So as a consequence to your decision to accept that agreement, twelve hundred high-paying jobs will be replaced with a hundred and fifty low-paying jobs. And I wonder how long the rainy day fund that our finance director speaks of will last before those taxes go up. This greatly concerns me, as do the terms of the master agreement. The non-compete clause should be removed. The current five-acre site with its current infrastructure is best for another potential partner. Pieces and parts of land to which the non-compete clause does not apply are not sufficient. So I would like to close by emphasizing to you what a unique gift we have with our hospital and the Lakewood Hospital Foundation. Prior to your decision, one could give to this very venerable cause. And this was posted on the Cleveland Clinic website a few weeks ago. I'm not sure if it's still up there, but I'll just take a part of it that I want to share with the public and the members of council and council president. As you consider giving to L H F, the Lakewood Hospital Foundation, remember that your gifts have a significant impact on the scope and quality of care Lakewood Hospital can offer to its patients. Your gift is used for the sole benefit of Lakewood Hospital, helping to better lives and advance the health and wellness of individuals and families in our community, including, and I won't read all the points, but the three points that really hit me were acquiring urgently needed equipment and medical technology, providing care to vulnerable and disadvantaged populations, renovating and refurbishing current facilities. And then you can click on that link. So I'd like to leave you with considering what an outstanding asset that was, a charitable foundation to give to the good, the greater good of our community. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Judy Gillespie.
Hello, everybody. Judy Gillespie, two three zero zero three Chandler's Lane, Homestead Falls, four four one three eight. I am signed up to speak about my concerns about the hospital, but first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Siley for being proactive in working on ordinance changes to protect the possibility of fires in the new townhouses, because I saw a fire at the end of my street on Elver, probably ten years ago, where somebody on the second floor of a double decided to put his grill out on the porch and cook. Caught his fire, his roof on fire, his ceiling, and then his roof. So good for you for being able to do that before they ever get built. That's a good, good, good job. I also would like to share quickly that I was at the county meeting today. And, and as you all know, I don't live here anymore, but I'm working with the Lakewood people, and I'm caring still about Lakewood, and I very much enjoyed seeing how a real county meeting works, how I get to hear you guys talk, how I hear you object, how, and you do it so politely, but I still recognize some objections. And, and I especially talked to Mr. Bullock about that because there's a building that the city's going to go in and offer a loan to the company, that's going to go into the Christian Science Building there at the shopping center by Drug Mart. And he brought up some really good points, and he was doing a really good job. And, and the man that was presenting it said the vote had to be tonight. What I got to see was I got to see you guys pushed into having a vote and push it through, even though the big discussion for the most part of that, that I understood, was about the parking. They need forty-four spots, there's not forty-four spots there, they got to work it out, you guys are going to work it out, they're going to work it out, everything's supposed to be fine. But Mr. Bullock brought up some really good points, and my biggest concern when I walked down the hall with him was to say, how come you didn't, didn't, how come you just didn't vote no instead of voting yes with everybody else? And he explained to me how all the years that he's been here, he has had to learn how to work at getting things accomplished. And he said, the parking will be worked out, and he knows it will be. But that political behavior, I don't understand. But he did a good job, and I think the discussion was a good opportunity for me, not even as a resident anymore, to see how you guys work, and also help me see who talked and who didn't talk, and who, who was, was, you know, involved and who wasn't involved. So I encourage everybody behind me to, to invest your time in a county meeting and see what it's all about. Okay, getting on to my, my, let's see, oh, let's see, getting on to my hospital concern. Last, two weeks ago, I came up here and said to you that I believe that their healing is, this is a time of healing, twenty sixteen. Got a new, two new people. We were working forward to sixteen, and, and I specifically asked you to try to heal the confusion of the ER. I didn't know Kevin Young was going to talk on it, but I am coming back two weeks later to say, I not only talked to you about me encouraging you to do something about informing the residents, but hoping that you would do that and make some kind of conscious effort. And so I'm here two weeks later to hold you accountable for what I took the time to talk to you about and ask you to consider for you to be part of the healing process to the people that you represent, so that the city, the people in the city know that it's not an emergency room, it's an urgent care. And that's where, again, I will ask you, would you please, and I think if you partnered with Dr. Kilroy, you and him could put a really heck of a good piece of, of information to the public. If you're not qualified to, to do it, I'm sure that man would step up and help you do it. And just as Kevin said, the residents deserve to know ahead of time that just because the Cleveland Clinic calls it a ER, that doesn't make it an ER. So I'm really here again to ask you to be accountable for what it is. Even though I'm not a resident, I'm still encouraging you to take some proactive information step to educate the people that are going to pay a very high price, like Kevin said, about going to the emergency room and possibly dying in an ambulance on the way to another hospital. That shouldn't be on your hands. You should be able to inform the people of the result of the decision of you selling it to, to an owner that is misrepresenting it before it's even opened. Thank you.
That's the end of the public comment. Excuse me.
I live a little late. I didn't get to sign in, but I would like permission to do.
Any objection? No objection. Okay, great. Come on up.
My name is Elizabeth Spice. I live at fifteen fifty-one Lakeland Avenue. My granddaughter is Aleah, and her dog is Scrappy. Today, we spent five hours at University Hospital, which is one of her routine visits, in which she goes to pulmonology, endocrinology, and other testing and things that she has to go through because of her cystic fibrosis. My son gained custody, temporary custody of Aleah in November and gained full custody of her a couple of weeks back. Approximately a year ago, it became apparent to my son and to my family that possibly her mother was not complying with her medical needs. When Aleah began spending more and more time with us in the home, it was increasingly difficult to get her to sit for the fifteen minutes in the morning for her vest and the twenty-five minutes of breathing treatments, and that's twice a day. So at the time, my son was living in Cleveland, and the puppy, who at that time was six weeks old, was just a puppy. A puppy, that's all we knew, a puppy. And the purpose of the puppy was maybe to help her get through some of the issues she was having, not only with breathing treatment, but she was having a lot of separation anxiety, not seeing her mother. So she would hold the dog like a baby and rock him while she did her breathing treatments and while she did her vest. The vest shakes her, and it starts off very slowly, and then becomes very violent towards the end, and it runs in five-minute increments. The dog, over the course of the years, he just turned a year old in November, has become very accustomed to the sound of the breathing machines going on and the vest going off, and he's right there, because that's what he's used to. He sits right there with her. She can't hold him anymore, but he'll lay down beside her, and she'll drive cars over his back, or she'll play Barbie dolls with him. In the summer, on the Fourth of July, while walking home from fireworks with her father, individuals unknown threw fireworks into the street, hit the curb, bounced up, and above the hundreds of people walking down the street, it landed right on her chest. She sustained a third-degree burn on her arm and on her chest, in which she will be permanently scarred. And after being released from the burn unit in Metro, she was in my home, and that required daily treatment of this burn, which meant changing it and scarring it. I don't know if anybody's experienced or seen anybody having a burn treatment done, taken care of, but it is excruciating. The dog was at my house during that time, because she was there, the dog was there. We would sit in the bathroom, and for fifteen minutes, that child would scream, and I'm surprised the police weren't called, because the screams were hideous, and that dog didn't leave her side. She would hold his paw or his head and squeezes it until it was over with, and then fall asleep on the couch with the dog beside her. There was no intentions of bringing some vicious pit bull into our home or into anybody's lives. This was just a dog. When my son was granted custody of Aleah, it became very apparent that he was going to need a lot more help from myself and my husband versus living on his own. And this is how he ended up coming into, back into Lakewood and with the dog and my granddaughter. from myself and my husband versus living on his own. And this is how he ended up coming into, back into Lakewood and with the dog and my granddaughter. At this point, with everything she's gone through, I can't even fathom the idea of having to sit this child down and say, "Now come and take your dog." I can't do it. So I'm asking council not only to consider this for the sake of my granddaughter, but also take into consideration what BSL really is. This is the opposite end of the leash. These are people who have bred and trained dogs in such a manner, and it doesn't have to be the quote-unquote pit bull, it can be any dog. And her mother's car, Leah was bitten in the face twice, once by a boxer and once by a Yorkshire terrier. So any dog raised inappropriately can have the propensity for violence. But I can assure you, in this situation right now with this little girl and this dog, there's no violence, there's no vicious dog. I wouldn't have a vicious dog and expose it to my granddaughter. The fact that she'll even go near a dog is a miracle in itself. So I do ask that council consider this. I know that there is a hearing coming up and I am waiting on the results of the DNA, but we do have a hearing scheduled for February 23rd. So I am hoping at that point that council will reconsider this issue, not only BSL in general, but at least allow us the opportunity for Leah to continue to have a dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Butler?
Thanks. I don't wanna directly respond to anything that Space said. And I really don't have any direct response to any of that. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process, so that council members are aware. You've been, you've been appealed to tonight with respect to this particular animal as well as our legislation in general, Section 50603 and other relevant sections of our codified ordinances. The process that has been codified since 2008, when the city first put the quote-unquote breed ban into place, is this. An animal control officer has the obligation to make an initial determination that an animal is of the type identified, the types identified in Section 50603, the pit bull definitions. There are three specific breeds that 50603 mentions, or predominantly a mixture of those breeds. Once the animal control officer makes that initial determination based on his, his or training and the characteristics of the animal, the animal control officer then puts the owner of the animal on notice of a hearing that must occur under the code. The hearing is conducted by a, it's not a court proceeding, it's a private hearing. And it's conducted by the Director of Public Safety, who in Lakewood happens to be the mayor or his designated. In our case, it's conducted by his executive assistant, who is an attorney. The animal control officer and the owner customarily show up to the hearing. The owner is given an option. The animal control officer then must put the evidence on in front of the Director of Public Safety or designated that demonstrates that the dog initially is of the type, can be characterized as of the type identified in 50603. Then the burden shifts to the owner of the animal to put on evidence that the dog is not of the type identified in 50603. And so you heard about a DNA test tonight. That, that usually is sufficient evidence to demonstrate that an animal is or is not a banned type of dog. And then within a certain period of time, there's other evidence that may come into that hearing at the time. And then within a certain period of time, I believe it's five days, the, the hearing officer ultimately makes a decision as to whether or not the dog qualifies as a banned animal in Lakewood. And then puts the owner on notice via written opinion. That decision is appealable to the Court of Commerce as with other due process decisions, administrative decisions here in the city. We have specific exemptions for certain types of animals under our code. So if a pit bull happens to be a service animal, as that term is defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, the pit bull is exempted from the provisions of the ban. If the pit bull is being cared for by a local nonprofit rescue organization or a veterinarian in Lakewood, then it's exempted while it's being housed in Lakewood for purposes. And police dogs that happen to qualify are also exempted. That was council's legislative priority throughout the years. I think you are being asked to do a number of things by the various comments being made and some of the public advocacy that has occurred. I don't profess to wish to weigh in on any of those requests of you, but I will say that, just for the benefit of the members of the public court here, unless legislation were to change, that process is codified and it does involve a councilmatic decision. And that's no disrespect to any of you, of course, but it's a decision that, under our code, is made ultimately by the Director of Public Safety and then any reviewing court passed that point. So very much respect the advocacy that has occurred tonight. And we'll have the hearing in February. Certainly if there's early word on the DNA test results, the law department, in cooperation with the Division of Police, the Animal Patrol Office certainly would like to see those results early. And it may be possible that the hearing isn't necessary. We've certainly done that in the past, but I just leave it to you to, to consider the policy ramifications versus the, the actual process of a hearing. That really is administrative process and executive function. Policy ramifications are all yours, of course, the city council. And one final thing. Comfort care animals, as we've come to learn, and assistance animals, as those terms are defined under certain federal law, don't automatically qualify as service animals as we use the term in our ordinance. So the Americans with Disabilities Act has a specific provision with respect to service animals, which those animals that are exempted from our pit bull ban. Assistance animals and comfort care animals may very well describe this dog in question. Aren't, aren't automatically exempted from our code. That is a policy consideration for the city council. But I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
If I may?
I'm sorry, I would ask that we conclude the public comment.
It's made an egregious error as far as the emotional service animals.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This really isn't a question and answer period, but we'd be happy to hear what you have to say individually or afterwards.
I'm happy to talk to you too.
If I may?
So.
After the meeting.
After the meeting, sorry. Yeah, which will be in 30 seconds or so. On that note, any announcements from the administration? No?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Some constant notes. I met with Dr. Welch, who will be the Director of the Emergency Room at Lakewood Hospital, to go over the changes and how it'll impact our transports to the hospitals. And based on my meetings with her today, many of the comments that are made, have been made here tonight, are inaccurate statements. That emergency room facility will be an emergency room like the one in Brunswick, like the one in Avon. It will have blood products and it will be able to treat patients there in that emergency room. They will be able to treat strokes with TPA, with diagnostics. The diagnostics are all done by telemedicine, connected back to the main campus. The treatments will begin, so when they say time is tissue, the treatments will begin in a timely fashion and the patient will be transferred to the appropriate receiving facility. The patients will be given priority on beds, which you would not get if you were taken to the ER facilities at Fairview. You may have to wait there for beds. But patients coming from a freestanding ER are given priority bed placement. The transport costs will be covered by insurance. And one of the issues that has come up, that we've noticed has come up with those, is proper documentation. So Dr. Welch has assured me, and we will be working with all of our staffs at the emergency room at the fire department to make sure that the patient charts are documented correctly so that the insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, private pay will be covering any additional costs. We're going to be doing training with the fire department the next three days to go over what the capabilities of the ER. And in my conversations with her, I do not feel its projections are going to be as, as great an impact as I thought it would back in February when we started this discussion about the capabilities of this ER. It's gonna be a newer model. It's gonna eliminate the curtain space that's currently there because there is concerns about private, patient privacy with those. It's gonna be all walled rooms. You're going to have direct access to the lab for this ER, where if you're on an inpatient facility, the lab results are waiting, in competition for in-house patients as well. So the potential is that your lab results will be done quicker than you would get if you were at a Bricks and Mortar Hospital. So I'm confident that this is a workable service and facility that will provide good care to the residents of Lakewood. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Yes, Councilman Marcus.
If I could just comment also, thank you, Chief, for enlightening us on that. And I have done my research too on the difference between an urgent care center and an emergency department. And an urgent care center is not open 24/7. It has limited hours and limited employees to facilitate care. So thank you for clarifying the nature of this emergency department, that patients will be well-attended and will get the required needs according to the nature of their problem. And I know that very much of that comes from our excellent EMS department. Your staff is very well-trained. I know myself, if I felt I was having a stroke or a heart attack, I would not be driving myself or having a family member drive me to the hospital, but I would call 911. So thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Marcus. Councilmember Bullock?
A quick question. Lord Dr. Butler, when is our litigation hearing next scheduled? It's come up soon, isn't it?
Hospital lawsuit?
Hospital lawsuit.
Thursday?
Tuesday.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I just wanna take a moment to recognize the outstanding work conducted throughout the years, but especially yesterday, in the part of some of our younger, more engaged citizens through the Help Two Others program, H2O. Folks out there in the community aren't familiar with H2O in Lakewood, please Google it, find out a little bit more about it. And what I saw yesterday definitely broke the stereotype of young kids just sitting around pecking away on their phones. These kids are out there rolling up their sleeves and getting involved with some of the most needy and some of the most challenged in our community. So I appreciate their efforts. And again, just encourage everyone to learn as much as they can about the Help Two Others program here in Lakewood. A big kudos and hats off to those fine folks.
Thank you. It's great to hear such a poignant reminder of service on Martin Luther King Day. I hope everyone had a restful and enjoyable Martin Luther King Day. Any other announcements from administration or council members? Okay, carrying on, I would move to adjourn. Questions and comments seconded, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Can I catch you one minute?
Before you leave?
Real quick, yeah.